Father God, we come today to thank you for this day. We thank you for this moment that you've given us to come together. And we pray now for this meeting tonight. God, we ask your blessing upon this leadership mayor and board of all. We ask that you would put your arms around him and protect him from all his harm and danger. God, give him the knowledge it takes to lead our town forward. And we thank you in Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Salute pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is standing here, one nation under God, indivisible, and eternal.
Do we have any announcements?
I'm gonna get a roll call first. Take a roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. We're right in this, Ms. Goldman. Ms. Goldman, can you give us a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Prater.
Here.
Mr. Shaw.
Here.
Mr. Green.
Present.
Mr. Locke.
Here.
All present, mayor.
We have a quorum. This meeting is now in session. Do we have any announcements? I'd like to announce that City of Bastrop did get a grant from the National Park Service for technical assistance with the Smith-Wilson Park. And we have another grant application on that we have not heard back from yet, but we feel that no news is good news at this stage. So, we are asking, we're gonna have a public meeting in, is it December, Ms. Lo?
December, the other day.
Fourth or so, somewhere in there. It's a Tuesday in the first week, I think.
4/11.
December.
4/11, eighteen twenty.
Okay. But please look for that on our website, cityofbastrop.com. And we really want the public to engage in, as we redevelop Smith-Wilson Park with hopefully walking trails and things. Okay. Public comments as they relate to items on the agenda? Does anyone have any comment? Would you state your name and address for the record, please? Enter the microphone. Is it close enough to you?
I don't know. I'm pretty loud.
Oh, you're good. You're good.
I am not soft spoken.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Judy Owens, and I no longer actually reside in Morehouse Parish, but I came to address the issue about the housing development that is supposed to be situated or is proposed to go up behind the municipal center, that area that it... I was the previous owner of the Prep Center, which is right there at the back of that property. And even then, back in the seventies and eighties, we had a problem with flooding. We didn't have when they built it. It was built in 1972, I believe. And they did, when I first went to work there, we didn't have a problem. I purchased it in 1980. And even before I purchased it, and shortly thereafter, there were many buildings that were built up on the highway, such as where Fred sits now, McDonald's, that other strip mall across the road was built after that. And the more, the more that was built in that area, the worse the water problem got. There is that drainage ditch that goes right behind our, the Prep Center property. But about eighty-one, anytime it started to get really bad, and then they built all those office buildings that face Hope Street, and then they built, they had McDonald's, and then they got Walgreens. And the more that goes there, the worse that gets for the Prep Center. I understand it has now been listed as a flood plain, and they're required to have flood insurance. But my concern was that it started, anytime you had a bad rain, you could count on half or more of that playground flooding. My buildings flooded, and I took care of repairing all that damage at my own expense. I tried to purchase that property, but it was not for sale. From, I don't remember if it was Woodrow Wilson, or there was another man at one time that owned part of it. And they would not sell it to me. I wanted it so that I could enlarge that ditch and deepen it to keep that water off of me. I think after Ms. Lois Jordan bought it, it got even worse. The water got up to their main building and in that building. She also, at her own expense, had to take care of that problem because there was nothing being done. The state finally realized that in order to help her, they needed to put in a larger covert. They've done that across Cooper Lake Road. And it has gotten better, but I can almost guarantee you that if you have a really hard rain that lasts for two hours, she's still gonna get water. I built a wall about this high around that, where that ditch was, to keep it off of me. It didn't work. And I really have a concern for that, for her business, for those children. That's, it's been in existence forever. It's one of your prime businesses in Bastrop. And I just, I really think you ought to reconsider. I'm sure there are other, or I have heard that there are other businesses, such as you're talking about, this housing that you're talking about. There are other areas that are being led to that. I really don't see the need for it, but I don't live here. But I do know this, that if you do it, and if you put that property, you put concrete on it, you put houses on it, you are going to flood that property. There's no way you're not gonna do it. I don't think there's a way to keep from doing it. So I would ask you to reconsider that issue before you make a final decision. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Owen. Is there another comment? Thank you so much. Item three, I'm sorry, item four? No, five. Approved previous minutes. Regular meeting of the, of October 11th, 2018.
Mayor.
Motion, mayor.
Second, mayor.
Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem, Councilman Moore, second by Councilman Shaw, that the minutes from the previous meeting of October 11th be approved. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The minutes are approved. Item six, Finance Committee Report, Resolution 18-1808, building claims for the month of October 2018. Finance Committee Chair, Councilman Locke.
Mayor, I move that we accept the building claims for the month of October 2018, Resolution 18-1808.
It's been moved by Councilman Locke.
Second.
Second by Councilman Shaw, that we accept the report. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The report is approved and adopted. Revenue and expense report, September 2018.
Yes, ma'am. That you shared the whole work, just let us know what's in spend and what the revenue was.
Okay.
No action needed.
No action. Ms. Lois Jordan. Is Mr. Jordan here? Hello, Ms. Jordan. How are you? Great.
I'm not doing so good. My husband's in the hospital, but it's important enough for me to be here, even though he's facing major surgery in the morning.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Lois Jordan, and the director, president, owner of the Prep Center. I come first as an advocate for young children in this community. I've been entrusted by many parents to care for their children for forty-five years this November. The past and present staff have maintained a goal to teach children and to put them on the path to success. For one day, these children will also be taxpayers. Secondly, I come for the parents of these children, for they seek first and foremost a safe environment, to leave their precious children in order for them to go and be gainfully employed and also be taxpayers. These are people who have chosen to be in our parish, to raise their children here. Thirdly, I come for the thousands of children that have grown up at the Prep Center, that I preserve a favored part of their childhood, their memories growing up in Morehouse Parish. Fourthly, I come for my employees. Today, the Department of Education announced that we are a four-star quality rated childcare center, and that we are one of three hundred in the state that are considered on the honor roll. They want to work in a safe environment. Their heart's for children, but I must provide for them a safe environment. Also, I come as a concerned executive director of the Prep Center. I have been advised by authorities that it would be probably a good idea for me to put a privacy fence on the road facing Cooper Lake. As a childcare center, as a director, I'm notified when there are sex offenders in our community. I'm astounded of that number. Any of you can look it up on the web. I'm proud that we have the four-star rating at the Prep Center. However, parents choose where to live and where their children are gonna be educated, but they choose where they're gonna be safe. Lastly, I come as a property owner. The Prep Center was built in 1973. We celebrate our forty-fifth year. Since that time, space estates, Regions Bank, Walgreens, the Funeral Home, Walmart, Fred's, Hope Street, what we all refer to as new space estates, have been built. In seventy-three, we weren't even in part of the city limits. It was a wooded area there. And I'm proud that the town grew, and we had all these great places to serve us in our community, these businesses. But as the city grew around us, the infrastructure for drainage did not. Most of you know, it backs up on McRight Street at the hallway stop, floods those little businesses, and comes right on back to me. I did address it with the state after I bought it from Ms. Judy Owens, and they did shut the road down and build that covert up. But it does not, water doesn't run uphill. When we get to McRight Street, it stops. So the infrastructure for our city did not grow as it grew. Since then, I've been notified that FEMA considers us a flood zone now. That's new since the last of the flooding that we had. I was quite shocked at the price of flood insurance, but it's mandated that I purchase it. I've been, I've spoken to Mr. Clarence Hawkins. I've always had respect for Mr. Hawkins as an educator. And perhaps when this project started, we needed housing. But it's my understanding now with rural development, you can purchase a home with maybe sometimes no money down. Or other housing projects that have come into our, our community, we're not liking for housing for anybody. So with this proposal, I just ask that, tonight, that you understand, I am very much against it. Because, I've spoken to you councilmen before about my concern for the safety of the children. There's been an increase of crime, there's been increase in my taxes, there's been the threat of property damage. And this, we don't want to see our value of our properties decrease, possibly lose business. And if this were to pass, I would have to consider a privacy fence, not only for the front of my property, but all the way around it. We've had the pressure of the water that came off Hope Street take the fence down on the playground. And to my expense, we have to put it back up and to fix those things. Right now, I've not flooded, but I fear I would, I would start again. So, I couldn't afford a fence all the way around that property. I just couldn't imagine, and if I did flood, I couldn't stop the flood from, the waters from bringing the fence down. If you have to relocate a childcare center in the state of Louisiana, your license automatically goes into a provisional state. Well, I wouldn't be a director of a four-star center if I wouldn't wanna be, ever be in a provisional state of licensing. It is my goal to keep those children on that property and safe on that property. I come today with a heavy heart, because this is my life's work. I stopped by and asked for a job for Mac and Lynn McGill, I was eighteen years old. It is my home. I live here, I work here. I have invested my whole adult life in this community. I too am a taxpayer, and those hundred and fifty-two parents, they're taxpayers. Now, I back up, hundred and fifty-two children, they both have two parents. They're taxpayers. So if this is a pitch to bring in tax revenue, I'm giving you revenue. And I'm trying to keep children here in our parish that will stay, and their families are choosing to live here, let's not give them any more reasons to not want to live here. So as I try to raise my babies, pay my taxes, and say my prayers, I'm begging you to do what's best for our little city block. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Jordan.
Thank you. Ms. Jordan, thank you.
Mayor and councilman, before I get started, I had requested...
Would you state your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry. Cindy Hendricks, in nineteen oh five East Madison's my business.
Thank you.
All right. I wanted, I had requested that maybe I get a chance to talk after the housing development with BDT. In case there were so many other questions that I may have, I would be able to ask those. And so I'm asking again, can I do that and speak afterwards instead of now?
Gentlemen, would anyone have a problem reversing that order and allowing Ms. Hendricks to state, to come after the presentation?
I have no problem.
Anyone have a problem? Ms. Goldman? Okay. So let's do that.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Discussion, action, purchase of city-owned property by BDT Housing. Ms. Tracy Prince, how you doing, Ms. Prince?
I've done that surgery twice and had a port removed, stage four cancer, so I know what she's doing, doing her treatment, and I thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. You're right at home, Ms. Prince. You can feel right at home here. Mayor Hawkins.
Good, thank you. I'm not Tracy Prince, this Tracy Prince, and I'll introduce our associate, Tom Andrews, as well. Mayor and board of all the persons, thank y'all for hearing me again, and hello to everybody in the audience. I'm Clarence Hawkins, and I too am a citizen here. My address is 2506 Providence Avenue, Bastrop, Louisiana. Thank you for allowing us this opportunity to come. I spoke to Ms. Jordan. She called me to talk about this. And I need to tell you, my relationship with BDT Housing is because of my desire to help improve the city of Bastrop and this Morehouse Parish community. You guys blessed me with the opportunity to serve you for twenty years as mayor, and I was fortunate to serve in the Obama administration as State Director for Rural Development with USDA. And my twenty years being mayor and my seven years being rural development helped me be competent and be aware of opportunities that existed for rural communities. And I made a vow that I would use that knowledge and awareness of programs and opportunities to better rule America, and especially my hometown, the town that I've lived in for fifty-three years. While I was mayor, that property that we're referring to on Moller, Greenwood, Cooper Lake, bound on the north, on the east by the municipal center and by the ditch on the back and all the rest of that, has been their dormant. It's been empty, and the city of Bastrop owns it. We tried to find opportunities to do something with it before, and I regret that during the time that I was here, I was not made aware of the potential hazard that it presented to the Prep Center and to the surrounding area. The city of Bastrop is going to have to make some decisions about that property, because whether a housing development is built there or is left as it is, the flooding potential and hazard is gonna be there. My appreciation, and those of you in the audience know that you pay, and everybody's been getting property taxes from the sheriff lately, y'all been getting property taxes? And you see on there, you see on there a drainage tax that's parish. So this drainage situation is gonna be impacted, is gonna be an impactor, whether there's a housing development or anything else put on that property. That area is zoned for residential development. The city of Bastrop owns that, and if you want to alleviate the situation, it needs to be rezoned. With that said, my reason for being here tonight, and I didn't, we didn't take this off of the agenda as it stated, is to withdraw our request to purchase the property. I say again, my reason and our reason for being here is to withdraw our request to buy the property. So the flooding... The flooding issue and all of those unspoken issues are not because of BDT Housing and our attempt to provide affordable housing to the citizens of Morehouse Parish. That doesn't alleviate the situation that Ms. Jordan talked about. That doesn't alleviate the flooding. So we are going to seek other options, opportunities to provide affordable housing for people in Morehouse Parish. With that said, I'd like to introduce, so that, because BDT Housing and me, and I'm not a part of them, but I formed an affiliation because they can provide the technical assistance that I need in order to improve conditions here. We're still gonna be around. We will be coming back and asking your support. Support, as you do with all other projects, be it industrial, be it residential, be it medical, this city's support on, on projects that will help you and me fulfill our responsibilities to make this a better place. I'd like to introduce to you at this time, Ms. Tracy Prince, who's the executive director of BDT Housing, and she will have some comments. And then we will hear from Tom Andrews.
Good afternoon or good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me, Mayor, Honorable Mayor. Like Mr. Hawkins said, we don't wanna create any habits in this community. I commend you for being a four-star daycare center, but we wanna do what's best, and thus say the Lord. Like I said, I had stage four hospice, died, almost died. And I promised the Lord to provide and do what He, His will. And that's what He has empowered me with, Mr. Hawkins. And like Tom will explain the type of housing, this will be working-class people in the housing that is no lower income. Everyone will be working in the agricultural industry that lives there. No anyone or any persons that's not working in the agricultural, that we take advantage of every day, that grade A USDA stamp on, those are the people who will be living in this housing complex, once we find a site that's suitable. And we will come before you, and we thank you for the resolution that you've already signed for us, welcoming affordable housing in your community.
Ms. Prince, thank you so much. As you know, this body, this council supports quality housing for, and there's been so much miscommunications. Of course, I was the one to raise the issue because we were unaware of, of an agreement, and I brought it to the council and, and the people. And I totally did not make the connection, but we didn't know anything about, you know, the option and all of that, so that's why we brought it. But, but we passed a resolution in the very next meeting to support housing in Bastrop. We want you here. We want...
Well, Mayor, can I say, we respect that we have a new board. That's why we're coming before you tonight.
Yes, ma'am.
To rescind our offer to you.
Yes, ma'am.
We brought Mr. Tom Andrews in from Dakota. He's my consultant on the project, and he's, has wealth of information in a lot of projects around the country to help us on the farm labor. It's working, workforce housing is what it's called.
Yes, ma'am.
These people are working just like you and I and everybody in here, and they deserve to have adequate, clean, affordable housing. And that's what the government is allowing us to do in welcoming your community.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir. And I wanna introduce Mr. Andrews, too.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I'll keep this short. I'm working for the national technical assistance provider for USDA rural development to promote this type of housing and development. There are limited amount of funds at the federal level for workforce housing for individuals or families that work in the ag industry and the ag business. There was a national competition for these funds to build housing in communities. Twenty-four applications were submitted nationwide. Twelve were selected, and your community was one of those twelve. So, there was definitely a need that was identified in the area. We think it will be a well-deserved project, and we think it's gonna be a model project that we wanna build for you. Thank you.
Well, we welcome you to Bastrop, and thank you all for, for your presentation tonight. And we, as you know, we did issue a resolution in support of housing development of the type that you are seeking after we rescinded the, the offer that we knew nothing about. And we want you here.
We want to be here.
Yes, and we want USD to know that we want you here. Mayor Hawkins is genuine in his, in his effort. He's talked about this for a long time when he were, I don't wanna say retired, 'cause he's not retired, but when he came back, he has the most knowledge of anyone in this town about, or in Louisiana, probably, with his, yes, you do, Clarence. But we want that knowledge, and, and I begged him to, to, to help us here develop housing. And I stated in the meeting, and I'll be quick, I'll be very quick, that if you look at, when has a single-family house been built in Bastrop by an individual? It's probably been forty-plus years since an individual has said, "I wanna build a hundred and fifty, two-hundred thousand dollar house in Bastrop." And that being said, we need development. Steve Perry has done a great job, and others are developing. There's a development going on right now that we're very proud of, and we want more quality housing for our people. So, please don't let this action cloud the waters. We, we want you here.
And Mayor, we have community support. Our team is, consists of Mr. Bill Land, architect out of Monroe.
Yes, ma'am.
We have Chris Demme as our engineer. He's a city engineer.
Mm-hmm.
Terry Demme.
Yes, ma'am.
And we have local support, and our public bidding will be for Mississippi, I mean, I'm sorry, Louisiana construction companies can bid on this. So, we offering jobs, and we're, once we find the site that we have, locate a site, and then we'll come back before you guys to get support and showing you and give you a full-blown presentation. Tom might not come back from South Dakota, but we'll have something to present to you the next time we come, once we get a site concreted down.
Well, I think I, I don't wanna speak for the county. Well, I think I, I don't wanna speak for the council, but I think I can. I'll speak for me then. We look forward to it. Any way we can assist, our office can assist you, we'll do anything we can to assist you and see this, this quality of project to fruition.
And I wanna address the audience. I wanna thank you guys for coming out and showing your love for your community. We respect that, and we don't wanna, like I said, we wanna have harmony and peace and let you guys go along with your life, not worrying about our daycare being with the flooding, but that's still gonna be there. That's not my, you know, animal, but he's gonna close it out.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Prince.
Finally, again, nothing can be done because you have a zoning ordinance that's specific and directs where properties can be built. I strongly suggest, Mayor and Board of all the persons, that people who have concerns about what might be located need to become more aware of the zoning and be proactive rather than reactive. All of that property that's beside the municipal center is not owned by the city of Bastrop. That was a piece that was advertised by Patty Blackwood for many, many months that's not owned by the city of Bastrop, that can be purchased by somebody. So I would suggest, strongly suggest, that if this board decides that that area needs to be segregated or segmented, that you revisit your zoning ordinance and designate as a no-bill area or potentially hazardous area. We respect you. Thank you for your attention. Do you have any questions for me before I say it?
One question about the agricultural labor. Nobody never answered that.
What about, what's the question?
Agricultural labor getting houses.
This is called farm labor housing. Tom will come in to give a little bit more specifics on that.
It's workforce housing. It's specifically directed for any individual or family, from tilling to planting to harvesting to transportation of any type of food product to processing and also to packaging. So it's the whole spectrum of employees in the ag, ag business.
To be more specific, people who work at Foster Farm?
Yeah.
They can apply and live in the facility. People who drive trucks?
Yeah, or DG Foods.
People who pick, drive the cotton pickers?
Yes.
DG Foods, that might be, DG Foods is a...
Process.
They take chicken and make another product. That's a little bit, might be a thin line there.
Yeah. Well, it hurt me because one of the TV stations came up and they quoted, I thought they attributed to me that migrant workers, and no one said that from the, from the city, that kind of information, and we cautioned them when they ran the story because I felt it was inflammatory and with a lot of misinformation. So thank you for clearing that up, because we didn't say that. And we made it clear that it was the program. We quoted that it was for, that people from ConAgra, that worked at ConAgra, that we live among all the time, they would be, they would qualify. And it wasn't for a caravan of people coming through here to, to pick tomatoes, you know, or whatever, to, to live there. So we thank you for your information, and we will love to entertain having public hearings and public information before you select another project, you know, piece of ground. I'm hoping, and in fact, we've been looking for places to suggest, and we may have a couple of suggestions that you can, that you can, in fact, we've had meetings with people who have land, and, and we want you here.
And there's some resources available within our group here. I'm sure out here, there's some people that could give you some information about a future site.
Sounds great.
We're looking forward to it. We hope you hold that twelve position. Okay, the twelve out of twenty-four. Thank you, thank you. Ms. Cindy Hendricks, is there a need for you?
Nineteen sixty-five.
Wait, before, before you do that, Ms. Hendricks, let's, let's talk about what we do with, with ten. There is no action necessary, so we're gonna go on. Is that okay with the council?
Right. It'll be documented, right? In the minutes.
Okay, great. Ms. Hendricks, you wanna say something?
I just have a few comments. As for me, whenever I got ready to look at all of this from, from the business point of view, I do wanna say, there's a few things that I do wanna recommend to the council when you're looking for land. And I don't know how much that the public actually knows the difference in like a Section Eight home, rural development home, and tax credit homes. And I thought it might be just a good time to kinda give the public a little bit of background in that. And from what I understood from my research, that most of the time, a Section Eight home is for people who make less than twenty thousand dollars. A rural development is usually under someone who makes less than twenty-six thousand dollars. That's a medium income. And then your tax credit is maybe those who make less than fifty-four thousand, they make a little bit more. But according to, when I looked up the tax credit, it also has to do with how many people you have in your family and so on, how that's all divided out. So I wanted them to understand that whenever you do look at a Section Eight home, what the research actually showed, that when you concentrate Section Eight homes into one particular region, what it does, it doesn't help the region. It gives it more of a bad health issue when people come by, that this is a Section Eight housing project. Y'all follow that? Then if you do the rural development, and what they're saying is, it doesn't need to be near homes like what was chosen, like the space estates area, business area. But whenever you do homes that are located within an area that is not, the property value has gone down, there's a lot of times these homes can bring up the property value. As a matter of fact, one of the things, it said that if you put homes, and especially your tax credit homes, which are homes that we already have here that have been going up, and you put those in an area that the property value needs to go up, it said that you can actually increase that property value for about a hundred and sixteen million dollars. Just, if you put those home in where you had actually asked for this to be located, near businesses, in homes that were over a hundred thousand dollars or, you know, a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, what you did, you devalued everything around there. So your loss of revenue would be about seventeen million dollars. And then that would also cause businesses to leave, residential people to leave, and you would have flight. So it didn't help that particular area. So I just kinda wanted to kinda give a little background so people really understood. And tax credit homes, they're more, they are from investors. And that means like Iberia Bank, it could be any of these big corporate agencies, Fortune five hundred agencies, that may go in and invest in these homes. And these homes then are more regulated according to what the investors want to do with them. And these people get tax credits, and so does the investor get tax credits. So I would ask that whenever you got ready to do, if you were gonna do any kind of housing, that you strategically place these in areas that it could actually help the community and values go up, not go down. Okay? That was really, I just kinda wanted that information out there for the community.
Can you repeat what you said about the Section Eight homes? They bring...
If you put them all together, if you put a section altogether, a Section Eight homes, and we are all familiar with, those are the projects. Do you understand what I'm saying? Well, I'm just saying, that's what people have said, and you don't want that. You want Section Eight homes kinda scattered, you know, and not put them as a group. That was for a study from Michigan State, it was, well, actually from Stanford, and that was what they were recommending. I'm just saying, that was the recommendation, and that came from Stanford University. The people that did the, the study was Rebecca Diamond and Tim Quaid.
Cindy, I can say some, some of the Section Eight houses are, are, they're not, some of them are Section Eight, I didn't know it was Section Eight.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but if they put them, what I, I'm going back and saying, concentrating them within an area, that, that's what I'm saying, is you just don't pile them all up together.
So you're saying separate them?
Separate them a little bit more. That was what their study suggested.
Then it depends on, then it depends on the neighborhood, right?
Yeah.
Where we put them at?
Yeah, well, and, and you know, and you're looking at the income, you know, of what that's gonna be. And what I'm saying is, with what they, what the study was showing, you want wherever you put these new homes, or you try and you, you do things, you want things to go up. That, that's your, you want to have affordable housing, but you want property values to go up. And that's what brings economic value, that's what brings your economy up and things like that. And I'm just giving that from what this study showed or said here.
And that study was from out of where, Michigan?
It was out of Stan, I'm sorry, when I said Michigan, I meant Stanford.
Stanford, okay.
And y'all did make it clear that these are not from migrant workers, because that was what I was told. This is not, okay? Just wanted to make sure, you know, how this is, and I think whenever you put these homes, and I say bringing the property value up, a question was asked me, how's that gonna help? That means it's gonna help all of us, if you can bring property values up. I had a few more things I was gonna say, and, and one of them was the concern of just our, the things that's going on in the city now. And while I have an opportunity, I wanted to say something about Facebook of how all these things get started. There's good things to be informed, but we also, if we want our community to grow in the way that it's supposed to, we've gotta start working together. And we gotta start building our city up if we're gonna talk about it on Facebook. If you wanna talk about it negatively, you talk about it to somebody else, but don't put it on Facebook. All it's doing is it's hurting us as a community. When you have people that doesn't even live here, that see that, it is hurting our community. We have got to stop some of this stuff. Social media is killing us, and especially when you have people from out of town that's telling you about it. So I'm asking everyone to kinda, let's start working together and let's start doing things. There was a quote that was actually by Booker T. Washington, and he quoted about things. It says, "Success in life is founded upon the attention of small things rather than the large." And I hope one day, and I know maybe the ones who's developing these projects or the homes, I wouldn't say projects, but the rural development and so on, tax credit homes, that I hope we can actually have a community, we don't need them, that everybody's working and everybody can have a nice home, an affordable home. That's really a dream. And I think that's the, that's the goal, that's a vision that we should all be looking for. But again, I'm gonna talk a little bit, when we talk about doing small things, small things would be talking to your business people before making a big decision like you were doing, that brought up. Your business people are the ones who pay your taxes. Your business people are the ones who support the community through their donations, help with their schools, all those things. Those are your local business people. If you want to go to stage and say, would you donate something, they gotta go through some kind of corporate office every time. Your local businesses can help you immediately. So I'm asking the small things that we can do, is one of them, here we are at Christmas. Let's work together. You know, we've got Christmas lights. Does everybody like the Christmas lights? All of that was done through volunteers, businesses, through businesses. And the taxpayers have not paid one penny for any decorations downtown. It is businesses that helped do that. It is the volunteers that we have, and the people that work for Keep More House Beautiful. You know, the ones who maybe we've gotten a few, a little bit of grants from the tourism that's here locally. So I just wanna know that we're all, there's some of us that are really twine hard. And some of the other things that we can do, the starting small that we can do right now, there's gonna be a Thanksgiving community service on November twentieth, twentieth, and the Episcopal Church is putting it on, and it's ecumenical. In other words, there's different churches coming in from, from the area. Support your local businesses, not Amazon. Amazon's not gonna give anything back to this community. It may be convenient, but when we want new roads, when we want things built up, and when we talk about repairs and things that need to be done to the city, you're not gonna get that from Amazon. So please shop local, that's small. Participate in the Christmas parade, help someone that's in need, and for goodness sakes, give up Facebook for a day and do something for a stranger.
Well, Cindy, I don't have Facebook.
Pass it on.
Cindy, I don't have Facebook.
You don't have, good for you.
I don't even know how to get on Facebook, Cindy.
Good for you, because I'm telling you, it's really been hard, and it's been hard on a lot of people. And that's really all I wanna say, is just thank you for letting me listen and hear me out, and just kinda give a little bit to the public of what that these housing developments are and what they can do for the community, and it's not all bad. But we just need to strategically place them in areas that's gonna help, not hurt. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Yes.
I appreciate and enjoyed listening to that, but I think one thing that I learned is you can find a study that will say anything. And I don't dispute that, but we need to be careful. I think the city of Bastrop needs to be careful. There was a practice that used to be in existence called redlining.
Yes.
Redlining and segmenting sections of a community for specific income people, gender people, religious people, all kinds of things like that. And I don't think, as we talk about Bastrop being the city of spirit, pride, and progress, that we wanna go there. I have to kind of not challenge, but clarify, USDA rural development is specifically designed to do just what it says, develop rural communities. Some of the amenities and some of the changes in this, in this city hall were done through rural development funds. Some of the police cars that the city police and the parish sheriff's department are using were purchased through rural development. Rural development housing is not just for poor people. There are houses and space estates and other areas that were financed through rural development loans and programs. So it is not a low-income, it's designed, it's called rural development and rural housing. So we don't want the nation to see the Bastrop City Council and think that we think that any housing that rural development has done is strictly for, quote, "low-income or poor people." It is for some of the folks in this room in here. And we also have a program that we're gonna be packaging, because rural development, like many people don't want government to be at the size that it is to shrink, rural development's employee force has tremendously decreased since I was there from oh-nine to seventeen. When I went, I had a hundred and nine employees, and now they're down to sixty-some. But they expected to spend the same billion dollars that they spent when I was there. So they are allowing nonprofits like BDT Housing to package loan. I have created a group of packagers, individuals who are trained now to help folks do those applications so that they can qualify for this taxpayer money that the government is making available for people to buy houses. There's a low-income housing program, there's a upper-income housing program, there's a guaranteed program. The banks in this community are happy when somebody comes in and wants to buy a house and it's guaranteed through rural development. That's not low-income. They have three and four-hundred thousand dollar homes. So affordable housing is what rural development is about. What's affordable to me might not be affordable to somebody else, but they still deserve to fulfill that American dream for housing. And that's what we all about. So thank y'all, and God bless you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Mayor Hawkins. And thank you, Ms. Tracy.
Thank you.
And thank you, Tom. Ms. Andrews. Eleven, Resolution eighteen dash eighteen zero nine, a resolution of the Mayor and Board of Alderman of the city of Bastrop to authorize the mayor on behalf, on behalf of the city to enter into a contract with Denman Engineering Incorporated to provide professional engineering services. to provide professional engineering services for master agreement for the Morehouse Memorial Airport. Brent Elton, Brent is our airport manager. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Um, what we're doing is, we have, um, we sent out requests for qualifications to engineering firms, because we're looking for a engineer of record for the next five years for the airport, and the projects that we intend to do at the airport. And we had three respondents to our request for qualifications. They were Denman Engineering, KSA, I think it's KSA Engineers. They're out of, uh, I believe it's, uh, Longview, Texas, and Michael Baker Incorporated, which is out of Baton Rouge. And, uh, so the mayor and a few other people with the airport commission, we, uh, sat down and scored each, uh, qualifications that they sent to us, and Denman came out on top. They simply scored the highest. So we would recommend that, uh, we accept Denman Engineering as our engineer of record for the airport.
And we can't go further, we can't go forward with airport projects unless we have an engineer of record. And, and I do appreciate, and I wanna commend the council on, on approving the airport commission. Those gentlemen came and did a great, a fantastic job of scoring those applications, and, uh, things went so well. So it's great that you gentlemen approved the, uh, airport commission, and I wanna thank you personally. It makes Brent's job...
It's gonna be a great big help.
A lot easier, and, uh, and so on this, we just need to make it official.
Mayor, I, I move that we accept, uh, Resolution eighteen, eighteen oh nine, for Denman Engineering.
I second that motion, Mayor.
It's been moved by Councilman Locke, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Councilman Moore, that we approve this resolution, eighteen dash eighteen oh nine, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Elton. Ordinance eighteen dash forty-two fifty-one. Let me state something also, for the record. You know, we had the Flying Tiger situation, where, uh, Flying Tiger naturally went defunct. And, uh, I just wanna report that, that the company, the new company, we worked everything out with, um, with Louisiana Economic Development to mitigate our, uh, losses of about four-hundred thousand dollars, and that's working out real well. We're reaching a new memorandum of understanding. Their, their attorneys are reviewing what we proposed, and we expect the, um, the new company is moving in as we speak. The, uh, Mr. Gray has taken, Mr. Gray, are you there? Before, you, you, you're there, Mr. Gray? Yeah, okay. Uh, Mr. Gray has taken a crew out and cleaned, or you finished, Mr. Gray, or close? Yes, done a real good job on the hangar, and we've gotten things that we needed to get out of there and secure in an area, and I wanna thank Mr. Gray. But that vector disease control, we expect to have them in there and operating by December the first. So I just wanna make that report to, to the council, that that is going good, since we were talking about the airport, things are happening at the airport. We still need hangars. We may lose a King Air, because we don't have hangar space to put it in. We're losing airplanes because, and we, we're, we're applying for hangars. We submitted an application for new hangars and runway extension under the, under the, uh, one-billion-dollar supplemental appropriation. And, uh, our hat wasn't even a ring, so we threw our hat in the ring, trying to get in that. So we've gotta be able to keep, you know, commercial planes in Bastrop if we can. We're way behind towns like Oak Grove on hangar space, and towns like Columbia and, and other towns, way behind. We hadn't had a new hangar built, uh, for public use in probably fifty years or so. Okay, um...
Twelve.
Twelve, Chief Crowder. Ordinance eighteen dash forty-two fifty-one, and ordinance to supplement the compiled ordinance of the city of Bastrop to add provisions governing the Bastrop Fire Department, and to otherwise provide with respect there too. Chief Crowder, and Chief Williams, not with you?
Uh, no, he had something, he had to do, uh...
Okay.
I'm gonna take care of this one myself.
Yes, sir.
But this is just, uh, 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 dotting of the i's and the crossing of the t's. It's basically, we need to adopt an ordinance to the city of Bastrop that basically will allow my department, fire prevention, to do investigations and stuff like that on, on fire scenes. We actually done it, but we lost the ordinance, we lost the permission to do it when the office closed down. This is just to establish this ordinance back, it's a, it's a rating deal that we have to say to the, uh, state fire marshal office that we do do this by this ordinance, and that's all it is, is just a crossing of the i's. We also do this already.
And you have those people trained already?
Yeah, they already trained, they, they do investigations, they go out and do calls and origin, but we have to have this ordinance state, stating to the state fire marshal that we do it.
And this is gonna help us on our fire rating, correct?
Most definitely, most definitely.
And we're trying to get, go back, as you know, we lost, we lost, we went from a two to a three to a four fire rating, and it's costing the people of Morehouse Parish or Bastrop, uh, of greater, the greater Bastrop area millions in extra pay for, for, uh, insurance coverage. And a two, uh, according to our research, I asked a local state farm agent to, to run those numbers for us, and it was a twenty percent difference in premiums. So think about saving twenty percent of your business, uh, coverage or your home coverage. That's our goal here, is to save the taxpayers' money by investing in our fire department and giving our fire department what it needs to, uh, get our fire rating, our fire suppression rating, back at least to a two. We want to be a one.
This is the introduction on it.
This is the introduction, yeah. Just wanna let you know what we're doing. And next month, we can do, uh, can do the, so this is just introd- action. Okay, so this introduces that. Thank you. Any questions for Chief Crowder? Okay, thank you, Chief.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Discussion, action, delinquent occupation license, and delinquent personal property taxes. Uh, Ms. Goldman?
Yeah, that's a list of, uh, businesses that's actually open, and we verify that. They've not come in, so we need to make some type of action on them. Also, the personal property tax, that, those items, you can't sell at a tax sale. They're called movables, so we're not gonna collect that if we don't do something. So that, that's my recommendation.
How, how do we get their attention?
I say file suit, file lien, whatever the attorney suggests. We've got to do something. Mail, I even went around to FedEx and Facebook. That did get some attention, but it, it didn't get none of theirs. And some of them are, are repeaters.
If the council will give us, uh, authorization, we, uh, we'll get with Mr. Pierre. We'd like to have your consent, gentlemen, to try to collect the city's money.
I move that we give, uh, Councilor Pierre, uh, authority to go ahead and send this out, or whatever.
To, to, to move this?
Move it, yeah.
Mr. Pierre, you have any comment, sir?
I guess we'll start with a demand letter.
Okay.
And then after that, we'll...
Proceed.
Take whatever appropriate action is gonna be necessary, try to collect the money on behalf of the city.
Okay. Is that satisfactory, gentlemen? Uh, do we have, you had a motion?
Yes.
From Councilman Shaw, that we, uh, direct council to proceed with a little more, uh, a little more, uh, you know, activity to...
I don't think you need a motion, because you direct my actions, so...
Okay. I feel better if the council gave me, made sure it's clear.
We're gonna let him earn some of his money, I, I agree.
Thank you. Well, we will, we'll assure you that we will take, uh, take the appropriate action to move...
Yes, sir.
The city needs it.
Excuse me, I don't think y'all ever made a motion on, um, number, uh, twelve.
We're not taking action for the ordinance.
It's information only.
Discussion only, then.
We're gonna do it next, next month, yeah. Thank you so much for, we always want you to help, help us, uh, stay in line, okay? Thank you, Ms. Tubbs. All right, yeah, so we welcome that. Discussion, action, accept bid for hay cutting at the Morehouse Memorial Airport and Cutler Industrial Park. Ms. Goldman?
Mayor, we, um, advertised the bid, and we had one bidder. His name was Jason Broadway, and, uh, his bid was, uh, five dollars per round belle of hay and one dollar per rectangular. What he'll do is, he'll go and cut, then we'll have somebody to verify, and then he'll bring us a check. It's not a lot of revenue, but we don't have to pay somebody.
Keep him pushing him, yeah.
And that's really kinda what we're doing. It'll be a contract for three years, and we, we kinda model what had been done in the past.
Is this the same guy?
No, sir.
No.
Uh, this one's never...
He never did this?
Never did. But he's anxious, because he lost time, uh, of when it was due, and when we had canceled. He's done called me three times. He's already got his insurance, I got, uh, the certificate in the mail. Um, so he's just waiting for a call in the morning, and then he sees him start.
I make that motion, Mayor.
Second.
Price is comparable to what we...
It's about what we've got in the past, yes, sir.
It's been moved by Council, Mayor Pro Tem Councilman Moore, seconded by Councilman Shaw, that we accept this bid. Any discussion? Well, I'd like to say that, uh, in, in negotiating the contract with, uh, the, that, uh, we talked about things like there are small trees growing up in industrial park, and, you know, things like that. And he, uh, the gentleman, uh, before the bid, we had extensive discussion on what kind of care he's gonna... Yeah, bring, and what he really wants to do is put a lot in it to yield, so that he can have, you know, good hay yield.
Fertilizer.
Well...
Or whatever.
Yeah, okay. But I think it's a good plan. Um, it's been moved by Mayor Pro Tem Councilman, um, Moore, seconded by Councilman Shaw. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, the ayes have it, the bids are accepted. Liquor license, Assistant Chief Anthony Evans.
Mr. Mayor, uh, City Council, we have eleven liquor license renewals that we recommend to be renewed. Uh, one is Handy Stop on East Madison, a class A. Two is Happy Stop on North Washington, class A. Johnny's Pizza, class B, on Bart Lou. Four is Sissy's U-Pak on East Madison, class A. Five is Especially Daughery's on North Washington, class B. Super One, East Madison, class A. Veterans Private Club on East Madison, class B. Eight is Primetime on Luther, class B. Nine is Morehouse Country Club on Gladney, class B. Ten is Walgreens, East Madison, class A. Eleven is Stop and Save, South Washington, class A. And these are not new, they're just renewals.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
I second.
Been moved by Mayor Pro Tem Councilman Moore, seconded by Councilman Green, that we, uh, uh, approve the license. Uh, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Uh, next item, item sixteen, we'd like, I'd like for permission to extend the agenda just for one item. As you know, Monday, Sunday is November the eleventh. It's a day that's dear to many of us, um, that have served this country, and, uh, it's not a holiday for the city of Bastrop. We, Veterans Day is a federal holiday and a state holiday in all states. It is observed on, uh, a weekday nearest, uh, November the eleventh. So it'll be, it'll be observed for, for, uh, on, on Monday. The, uh, Governor John Bell Edwards, ma'am? Oh, extend, okay, I'm sorry. I'm asking permission to extend the agenda. Thank you, I was going for it, I'm very passionate about this. Uh, but we need all five councilmen to agree to extend the agenda. If we can get a motion, I would love to have one.
So moved.
So moved by Councilman, which one?
Locke.
It's Councilman Locke, thank you, Councilman Locke. And seconded by Councilman Shaw, that we extend the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Was that unanimous, Ms. Goldman?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so the agenda is extended. Veterans Day, um, is observed by every public body in Morehouse Parish, the school board. It's observed by, it's a holiday observed by, uh, Louisiana clerks. Uh, it's a holiday observed by the Morehouse Parish Sheriff's Department. In fact, the Morehouse Parish Sheriff's Department, uh, observes, uh, fourteen, fourteen to sixteen holidays. Uh, the city of Bastrop employees only get eight. Now, uh, Mr. Prater has asked for raises. Of course, we're not in a position to give raises, but at least we can give some consideration for our people to, I didn't know that November eleventh, or that Veterans Day last year, was not a holiday. And, uh, to observe what was going on, uh, we could've taken that day off, and, uh, the peo- our people. Now, this does not apply to civil service. Is that right, Ms. Goldman, in your research?
You have to, yeah, you have to contact the civil service office and then make it a holiday.
Make it, yes. So this is for employees, that's not civil service employees. And I'm asking the council to approve, um, to approve, uh, a resolution that we have not prepared, but to approve a resolution in that you sign it. Uh, we want to let our employees celebrate Veterans Day Monday in honor of, uh, all of the sacrifices that are veterans, some are veterans. And, uh, are there any questions?
May I make that, uh...
Yeah, of course.
We're ready.
Yeah.
Yes, sir, I'm ready.
I'll second that motion.
So it's been moved by Councilman Locke, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Councilman Moore, that, uh, that Veterans Day be observed, uh, as a holiday, a paid holiday for non, non-civil service employees. That's all we have the authority to do at this time. Is that right, Mr. Pierre?
Yes, sir, I wanna make sure that you clear that that's, uh, for this year and the following years.
Yes, sir, this year and, thank you, thank you, couns- uh, counselor, for this year and the following year. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
You want to talk?
If we could...
Uh, no, I'm gonna wait, no, I'm waiting on a pizza person.
Okay.
Once I get that, so then he can bring her back, uh, next month.
Ms. Tubbs, bring someone back? Okay, I didn't, didn't get it. Okay, sixteen, if we could get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. She off today?
Okay, it's been moved, and second, uh, any discussion? On adjournment?
Great question.
All in favor?
Yeah, I didn't, you ain't got mine?
All opposed?
Opposed.
Mr. Prater opposes, the four...